Good evening, I'm Pat Hanlon. I'm the Vice Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, and I've been designated as Chair for tonight's meeting. And I'm calling this meeting of the Board to water. It is now 7:31 in the evening. And I ask all attendees who are not recognized to speak to please mute their connection until such time as they recognize the Chair by the Chair. Mike Direct confirmed that all members and anticipated officials are present. Members would include Christian Klein.
Here.
Roger Dupont.
Here.
Daniel Ricardelli.
Here.
Venkat Holley.
Here.
Elaine Hoffman.
Here.
And Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
The only town official here would be Colleen Ralston. You're here?
I'm here.
And we have with us tonight Outside Counsel Paul Haverdy of BBH Law. Paul?
Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Tonight, there's nobody appearing for anybody else because this is a deliberation session rather than a public hearing. And for that reason, we will not be taking any additional any additional information relating to the case. The only matter on our agenda is the 40B application of Housing Corporation of Arlington at 10 Sunnyside. We close the hearing on this on the 15th of August. And we are beginning the first deliberation session. This open meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the Supplemental Appropriations Act signed into law on March 29, 2023, which intended to extend it until March 31, 2025, the suspension of the requirement to hold all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Public bodies may continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location so long as they provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom application with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded and it will be broadcast by ACMI. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on this meeting's agenda or the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. There's only one matter on our agenda tonight, as I indicated before, and that is the beginning of the deliberation session on 10 Sunnyside Avenue. So at the outset, I'd like to review with you what I am hoping to do tonight in terms of our procedure. By now, you all have. And soon, when we share the screen, Christian will put up on the screen a draft with lots and lots of comments and corrections and additions and even some subtractions of the opinion that was prepared by Paul Haverdy in August. This will be our basic text and we'll be marking up this text over the course of this evening and probably Tuesday evening next week. I'd like to start with the beginning. And then, in a very non-Aristotelian way, skip over to the end. And so after we do the facts, skip to the waivers, which are a big part of what ultimately we will do. And then go back and go through the conditions. I'm anticipating that this will take at least the two weeks, the meetings that we have scheduled. I'm hoping it's only those two meetings. I know there are some things that we're going to take a little bit of extra time to work out. But I'd like to get as far tonight as we can. The... At this point, I'd like to sort of have as a general guideline that will aim for about two hours. So that'll take us until 9:35, which is two hours from now. That's sort of a soft stop, so we could go on a little bit after that. But your ability to process all of this begins to decline a little bit after a couple of hours. And so it would be probably worthwhile to it would be worthwhile to pace ourselves this time. I'm hoping that it will take no more than two hours to do the whole thing. So at this point, let me pause. And if there are any questions or suggestions, I'd like to hear them. And if not, we might be at the point where Christian should share his screen. My understanding is that all of you have or have access to or have received a copy of the opinion that we'll be working with so that you can skip around in that, even if Christian isn't actually showing it at the time. But so that's where we'll go. So let's, again, let me say if there are any questions or anything further that I ought to explain or that you want to explain to me.
I would just ask Colleen if she could make me a co-host.
All right, then. So Christian, I anticipate a time for... And this will give us a chance to start at the beginning. So I'm not quite sure. There's some interference and I'm not sure where it's coming from. But if you can check the mutes that you're supposed to have, then that will help. So let's begin at the beginning. And we'll start with the procedural history. The first general issue here is in the very fourth line. And I think that this is resolved unless someone has information to the contrary. We, for a long time, have been assuming that the commercial office portion of this project was 940 square feet. But on further investigation, it's pretty hard to believe why we ever thought that. The plans indicate that it's actually 608 square feet. And Ms. O'Connor changed an earlier draft on August 15th to 600. So you'll see there, the 600 square feet goes in. There's actually lots of other places where that comes up. But unless anyone has a reason to object to 600 square feet, I thought we might begin by doing that and succeeding in solving a lot of other problems at the same time. So I'll give you a chance to look at this. I mean, the next change is a number four, which I don't think needs any discussion. But if anyone wants to raise a point about it, this is your time. All right, going on to...
The other thing I will do is I'll go back and change Business 4 because that's not the proper name for the district. It's Automotive Something. I just need to look it up and I'll fix that.
Right, right, okay, that sounds good. And the addition of residential uses on Michael Street and Silk Street is probably uncontroversial. A number five. The... We were attempting to deal there with impervious surface. The testimony that we have was 96%. It was not so clear what the total impervious surface would be. And that has been deleted. And that seems perfectly appropriate. And it's not worth it to try to find out more about finishing the last half of that. But if anyone thinks that that's a mistake, please let me know. Okay, the next item we have on the list is number seven. And this too is going to give rise to a concern that will go through what we've... It rises at some other places as well. The, as you all know, for most of the time that we've had this, the applicant has been saying that it intends to rent out the units in this building to people who have incomes not exceeding more than 60% of the AMI. And that some of them would be reserved even for people who don't exceed 30% of the AMI. On August 15th, the applicant said, well, we still intend to do that, but we'd like the flexibility to go all the way up to 80% of AMI, which is basically what's allowed under the general, in 40B generally. So the question here is whether to accept the applicant's request that we replace, or I'm not quite sure about replacing, but that we include the language about going up to 80% of the AMI, or whether we leave that alone. So there are two options that are set forth here. The option that you don't actually see as an option because it's what we already have is what I would suggest we should consider. The applicant may be looking for flexibility, but a statement in the introduction to this document does not give them flexibility. And nor does the condition that we have when this comes up later on give them flexibility. They have the flexibility because we don't have any jurisdiction to set what the maximum amount is anyway. And it seemed to me, and when I thought about the request of the applicant, that having gone through all of these hearings where both for us and for the public, the 60% figure was a really important part of what we thought made this project and what was important about this project. The applicant may yet persuade their funding source to do something up to 80%, and we won't have anything to say about it. But I didn't want to sort of include the 80% figure in our permit as if we think that it's okay to switch basically from the 60% level that we've all been assuming to the 80%. And it's not that the applicant wants to do the 80%, they just want the flexibility to do it. They still tell us that what they want is to continue with the plan that they've already had. So I would suggest that we not include the up to 80% language here and stick here and later on with Mr. Haverdy's language, which ultimately will strongly encourage them to stick at 60%, but while recognizing that we don't have jurisdiction to compel that one way or the other. So that's the issue here. And I leave it up to the rest of you, whether that makes sense to you or whether you think that we ought to be including the 80% figure.
I do have a question for Paul on this. The project eligibility letter says 100% at 60% AMI. Are we allowed to adjust that?
Wouldn't say that you're necessarily allowed to adjust it, but ultimately, the affordability requirements are within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency. I will tell you that I drafted a decision for a board a couple of years back where all I did was regurgitate the exact language that was in the project eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency. The developer appealed the decision for a number of different reasons. But one of the things they appealed was the condition that parroted the language from the PEL and the Housing Appeals Committee overturned that language and said, you can't impose that as a requirement, even though that's exactly what they proposed. Even though the decision expressly seated that it was the authority of the subsidizing agency. So I mean, I think that we're safe in leaving this as drafted because it simply notes what was proposed. It doesn't intend to impose any sort of requirement on the affordability. And I think, you know, we can leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dupont?
So I agree with that too. As long as they haven't actually proposed 80% in their hearings, I think that we're just stating what it is that they've previously said in whatever their filings were. Plus, I think you were referring to B1 that Mr. Haverdy had drafted, which sort of explains the jurisdictional issue in all of this and says that even though they're saying 60%, you know, 60% and 100% of the units, that we really don't have any say in that anyway, just as Mr. Haverdy had explained when he had essentially parroted the language from the project eligibility letter. So I agree, leave it as is at 60%. And then we deal with the issue again in B1, I believe it is, down on, I think, the page 10 roughly.
Right.
Or do we leave it in the findings as 60 to 80%? Because they did mention in the hearing that they wanted the flexibility. And then when we go to conditions, we say we want them to stick with the project eligibility letter.
Well, my recollection of the hearing is a little different from that. They said they continued to intend to do... I mean, in a way, it's a question is what the intent is. Their plan, and maybe plan is better than proposal here. Their plan is to stick with the 60. But you know, there's lots of uncertainties in life and they want the flexibility, which they have and which we're not taking away from them, to go up to 80%.
I think condition B1 provides them all of the flexibility that they need. The finding simply denotes what was in their application.
Perfect. So at this point, I don't want to vote on each one. Is there a consensus to stick with Mr. Haverdy's language here? Okay.
Any with it, yep.
Okay, all right. So the next... There's... I'm not going to do this generally, but I do want to say that I'm pretty sure that... I'm guessing that Samiades is consultants rather than consultantes?
Their South American branch office is consultantes.
Got it. But we mostly are not going to... We're going to leave this up to the drafters to try to get these things thing and not waste our time on it. So the next thing is number 10. Most of this, I think, is uncontroversial. It just, I think that we started with the language from an earlier case. And it turns out that in this case, different agencies had consulted. I have two questions. One is, I didn't pick out the Inspection Services Department, but I don't know that they consulted. They're the only ones that I don't have a record. And I couldn't say for sure that they wouldn't. But on the other hand, there's lots of things. And I wondered if anyone else was aware of the participation of IST in any of this.
I would point out that Colleen Ralston is an employee of the Inspection Services.
That's true, that's true. All right, well, that's significant input, that's for sure. I wanted to emphasize the Conservation Commission. It comes up a little bit later on. It explicitly declined to comment because this was not in their jurisdiction. As you all know, when they say that, they must be talking about their jurisdiction under local law as well as under state law. Because our history with them is that when they, but for 40B, would have jurisdiction over a local law thing, they are not the least bit shy about providing us with comments on applications. So this really pretty much takes care of the wetlands issue, at least from the point of view of both the State Act and the local bylaw and regulations.
Mr. Hanlon asked a question.
Yes, please.
I'm going slightly backwards. But on number seven, that 25% that it lists first, is that... So it's all affordable, but that 25% is the voucher program housing? Is that what that's indicating?
Mr. Haverdy, you want to answer that?
No, so the 25% is the minimum amount required to be affordable in order for it to be an eligible Chapter 40B development? Although actually, it could be 20% because they're doing it at less than... Well, if they wanted it to be 20%, they would have to be having them all at a minimum of 50% area median income. So they couldn't do that if they're going to have some 60%. So it has to be a minimum of 25%. And then we're noting that their proposal is that 100% will be restricted. But we can't require that 100% be restricted as affordable because that's within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency.
Is that okay, Mr. Reddy? Daniel?
Sorry, sorry, muted. Okay, I understand now. So theoretically, I'm not saying that they would do this. But theoretically, this approval could be for 25% affordable housing if the subsidizing agency wanted it to be.
Well, it would require them to go with a new subsidy program because the subsidy program that they're using is going to require 100% affordable because it's low-income housing tax credit. It would literally require a reimagining of the entire project. So I don't think that's in the cards here. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Welcome.
So are there any other proposed changes in number 10? So let's go on to... I don't have anything more to draw to your attention until number 14. So does anyone have something that you'd like to bring up on the jurisdictional findings, starting with 11? Okay. Number 14 is a rewrite, which says a little more detail about the commercial uses and which includes how far away from them. Are there any questions about that one? Okay, if not, let's go on to number 15. Number 15 is there because in talking about the location, it's helpful to talk about the various ways in which the project is, particularly from a mobility point of view, is ideal for this site. And so it refers to shopping and other things that are quite nearby. Does anyone have any comments on that one? Okay, seen done. Let's go on to number... Whoops. Number 16 should be pretty uncontroversial. It just says that the intersection of Avail Life, Brook and Broadway is 370 feet away. Does anyone have any comment on that? Okay, let's go on to number 17. And you can tell from all the red that number 17 is sort of more more interesting than some of the others. There are two aspects of the... Well, there are three paragraphs there that... This all has to do with the parking. The first is a general... Is one formulation of what the rules are. And the next paragraph after that, which is... Which I think is partly wrong, but you'll see, or at least incomplete. The next paragraph is... Provides more about what the parking requirements actually are. And just to summarize them, you're supposed to have one parking space per unit is 43 because you're providing affordable housing for all of those. You get 10% discount, that takes you to 39. That's what the legal requirement is. The Board has the ability, if certain criteria are met, to reduce that down to 25% of 39, which would be 10, basically. And that is sort of basically what is included in the middle paragraph there. The reason why we go into it, or suggest going into it in some detail is that from the very first day, everybody has been getting this wrong. The applicant's transportation analysis was totally on another planet when it dealt with this. And while Ms. O'Connor corrected it at our second meeting, it still had been a problem all the way through. And so it seemed to be worthwhile to take a little bit of extra space and to set forth what our role here is, which is we have the discretion whether to provide the parking reductions. The next paragraph addresses really whether 21 is enough. And if you'll remember, the applicant produced information that indicated that the rate of parking usage per unit on this one is pretty similar to the average of similarly sized projects that they operate others and put that information in the record. So in doing all of that, this is intended ultimately to set forth the factual basis for the parking requirements and the possibility of a parking reduction later on. So I would suggest that we go with the longer version. It's more complete and avoids a potential for inaccuracy. But I leave it open to you. Does anyone have any comments on this one?
Pat, if we go with the longer, we would take the basically paragraphs, the two paragraphs that are there, correct? The one that begins the applicant and the second one begins the 21 spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so what would go is the first alternative, which is the first paragraph there, and then the others would be accepted.
And this would all occur as number, I think, as number 18?
That's... I don't know.
Okay, but it needs an independent number.
It needs a number, right.
Okay.
I agree with the longer version as well.
Okay, the next one, the next number, which... Who knows what that number will turn out to be? But the next real number that starts "Several neighbors express concern" It's part of an effort, which you'll see in some further paragraphs, of more explicitly taking into account the public testimony and indicating the way in which they're being treated. So number 17, at least on my copy, is... Talks about the general height of the building. Is there any... So I have one question on that, and maybe Mr. Klein can answer it. Is that at one point during the hearing, I asked what would happen if we did what was being asked, and that was to require four stories rather than five? And there was very strong testimony that that would essentially sound the death knell for the project. And I'm wondering if we should at least note that for the record, that was what the response was. And if so, whether this is the place to do that?
Well, we certainly could include that. Would ask Paul what he thinks.
All right, that's fine with me. I wasn't sure if I was on mute or not. Trying to keep up with the changes too.
I mean, to me, that was the moment in which fooling around with the height of the building was essentially taken off the table because we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what the neighborhood wanted and still have a project left.
Just a quick question about the language. So make the project impractical. Are we commenting on the... What's the term that they use in the decision? Uneconomical? If you have a condition that makes it so that they're not going to do, you know, make what they need to make? So I guess it's from Mr. Haverdy. So I guess it's from Mr. Haverty. Do we use the word uneconomical or whatever that term is?
It's uneconomic.
Uneconomic? Would that be used in in place of impractical there, do you think?
Certainly could be.
I didn't know if it made sense only because it ties into the to the statute.
Right, it ties into the standard.
Of the standard.
Yeah.
Okay, we had number eighteen. Again, this is addressing uh some of the testimonies. Um. Mr. Klein, I wonder, when we say several tenants, I I remember one, but I don't remember the others.
Uh, there was a there was a letter from a second, I believe.
I see, okay.
It is possible that it was one who was just very vocal in a lot of different formats. Um, I could take out the word several. Make that current.
I would I would I guess I'd say that several just emphasizes that there seems to be more than one, and I there can't have been more than two. And Ms. Fontenot raised this quite a bit, but but she was raising a lot of things like that.
Okay.
And could we maybe say at the end at those facilities because? And the reason I'm thinking about that is that actually it it doesn't make sense to get into indoor air quality here. It wasn't a major issue. But it's ironic to raise it because this is passive house construction, and it will. One of the benefits of doing that is to have super high air quality for the for the tenants. So it is useful to know that they're talking about other facilities that have been constructed in a different way.
And Mr. Chairman, along those lines, I just think it would clarify it if we said tenants of other HCA properties. Because they're not really referring to this.
Right, they couldn't actually because it's just it's not even a hole in the ground. But yeah, it's useful to remind people of that, I think.
I'm comfortable with that. Part of the reason is that the the applicant had said that they wanted to strike some of the stuff about the. The management plan that we have and conditions, and I just wanted that this sort of leads to my wanting to maintain that. So I just wanted to.
Got it.
Include this.
Got it. And certainly questions were raised about the adequacy of the management, and to some extent. The applicant did confess that it was a hard problem, so uh. That that was a concern. All right, so we ready to go back, go on to wetlands? Um. This sort of simplifies the. Uh, it this sort of simplifies the analysis of the wetlands. Basically. Yeah, this is picking up the point made earlier about the Conservation Commission that. They have jurisdiction not only over the state where they don't have to get an order of conditions, but also the local bylaw and the regulations implementing that. And the Conservation Commission has not asserted jurisdiction with respect to uh that uh to that either. Um, it's also helpful, I think, though, uh, and new uh twenty and twenty one. Uh, which refer to zoning bylaw provisions that we haven't thought as much about as some others, like parking, for example. Um, and that this is sort of bringing into focus that we have those issues uh as well, and that we need to make. A finding in some way uh of their meeting the both five point seven and five point eight of the zoning bylaw. Mr. Klein, do you have anything more to add to that?
Um, I would just say we should probably strike twenty because twenty is already included in twenty one.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions or comments on any of these? So while Mr. Klein is is doing this part, I was I wondered if Mr. For Mr. Haverty. Uh, in what is at least for the moment twenty two still. Um, where we say notwithstanding, they still provided to this uh natural and built environment uh thing. Is there any purpose being served by that? What? Why is it that we would? Care that they did that? Much of that was I had to do with stormwater, and it wasn't really had it wasn't really focused on wetlands at all, and I'm just wondering why we're mentioning it.
So I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, which?
This is this is. Twenty two is what is on this. It says although located out of the jurisdictional area, the applicant submitted an impact analysis on. Natural and build environment prepared by Utah and Sami Oates. So all it says is that they filed this piece of paper, and I guess I'm not quite sure why we bothered with that.
Um, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, it's sort of just laying the groundwork as to what has been submitted. So it's just sort of pointing out that this is an issue that was at least reviewed.
Okay. So I would I would suggest, I mean, it just seems to me after we've done done what we've done, this kind of just interrupts the flow. I don't feel strongly about it, but. Uh, I'd recommend that that we take this out. We don't generally put in. That this or that paper was filed. Uh, and it as as. It made more sense with a lot of the other things that are no longer in it in the section. Paul, do you have any objection to that? Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Was there anything in that? Analysis that made that had any bearing?
Not on wetlands, not on wetlands.
Okay.
It 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 had a lot to do with stormwater management. Most most of it was devoted to stormwater management, and some of it was the general kind of introductory material that every applicant. It puts in, but it wasn't really oriented towards wetlands.
Okay.
So I think through twenty three are simple factual statements. Does anyone have any comment on those?
No.
Okay, number twenty four. Uh. Is earlier, there was a there was a promise that later on we would talk about the proximity to um. Public transit, and this is the paragraph that does that. It's a little bit broader than the paragraph that we started with. Um, because um. It includes the Clarendon Busway, which also provides two stops, but I think as as any of you who who spend time down there would realize. Uh, and do realize the the eighty seven only runs some of the time, and. It's literally a four minute walk. Uh, not counting the time it takes to wait for the light to change at Elway Brook. Uh, to go to the Clarendon Hill Busway. So even though it's in a foreign country called Somerville, it uh it. Is very much a part of the transportation system. One of the buses there goes to Sullivan Square or somewhere near it. The other goes to Leachmere. All of them are connecting up to subway lines, and so when you put it all together. Uh, it greatly increases the transportation accessibility of the project. So that's the reason for being a little broader there. Does anyone have any any questions, comments, revisions to that one? Okay, let's let me move. I carefully I just read that part, and of course, there's an alternative just below. Uh, and that's what we used to have. So it's really more or less the same thing, but a little less. Mr. Klein, maybe you would like to address uh number twenty five?
Certainly. Um. So one of the things that had come up and was also was brought up in the first. Definitely in the first and second hearings, um, and in a couple of the letters that were uh sent to the board with the the question about the. The traffic on Sunnyside Avenue, how Sunnyside Avenue gets bogged down because there's parking on both sides of the street. Um, it's difficult to maneuver. It's difficult at the end of the street trying to move on to Broadway because there's parking on both sides all the way to the end. Um, and so. I basically wanted to make sure to include this. Um, as a finding because it was something that the that the neighbors were particularly concerned about, but also um later on, there is a. Uh, condition um. Asking the applicant to uh basically petition uh the Transportation Advisory Committee to consider putting. Um. Temporary loading zone in front of the building and also having a no parking within twenty feet of the corner so that. Um, cars can move out of the center, out of the travel lane when they're making their turns.
Any further comment on this one? All right, going once, twice, I think we've accepted this one.
Okay.
That takes us to civil engineering. So. I don't know that we need actually to discuss. This one, I mean, through twenty eight. Does anyone have any comments on twenty eight? I forget who purple is. Uh, I think that's part that's Paul, but.
Yeah.
Because we don't have impervious be. Because we uh, the applicant is, I mean, this this is laying the basis in part for. Originally, they were going to have an infiltration system, and now they're not, and they've asked for a waiver of the uh. Provisions of the local bylaw that in turn would require impose the requirement to abide by the statewide manual, which is what this is all about. Uh, and so abandoning the infiltration has largely pulled the reason out from from under this. Um, the bylaw itself, the stormwater bylaw is inapplicable unless you increase the impervious surface by a certain amount. Uh, or have a disturbance of more than an acre. Uh, but here. The whole property is less than an acre, and uh the impervious surface will actually be less. Under this project than it was under before, so uh the bylaw probably on its own terms doesn't apply, and when we get to the waiver, we'll. Uh, we'll address that, but this is ultimately related to that conclusion. Say if there's no comment, I think we can probably say we're okay with that one. Now, with respect to. Number twenty nine. Uh. The.
I did review the handbook.
Yes.
Um, and so what they're proposing is within the guidelines of the handbook for an existing parcel. So it's, you know, we're not going to say that it's best management practices or anything like that, but we're just going to say it's in compliance with mass standards.
Okay, Paul, does that seem right to you?
Yep, that seems fine.
Okay. All right, so we're now does solar access and shading impacts? Um, and again, Mr. Uh, Mr. Klein, give me one to address that one.
Sure. So as everyone knows, I had requested shadow studies, and then there was a question about what the impact was going to be for people with existing solar arrays. Uh, we finally convinced Utah to do the study, and they came back with their report at the. Um, the last hearing or the second to last hearing showing that it would be a reduction of three one thousandth of a percent of the annual solar energy potential for. The most impacted of this existing systems. So I just wanted to make sure that we included that finding here. Just to because we had specifically requested that information.
So anyone have any questions or objections to that? Okay, let's accept it. Yes, whoops. That must be a link.
Yes, indeed.
Um, there you go.
Uh, so for the most impacted system, I'm just wondering if that could be further clarified. Um, because. If I'm remembering correctly, there is an existing system on the parcel that could. That is the uh that has the most potential to be impacted. Um, does that make sense? Like, if that's different, that. It could be a little clear because there could be an existing system um on a parcel, and then there's another site that could be impacted. Uh, more substantially in the future, but I don't think that's actually the case here.
Right.
Uh. So I think it's something something about the most impacted site. I don't know. What the right phrasing is there?
What impacted? Distinct photovoltaic system? Impacted.
So is Ms. Hoffman, is the point here that? Um. Is the is is the point here that the? That the site that is the potentially the most affected. Uh, is only this small amount, whether they have it or not? Or is it that I mean, because what happens was supposed to turned out that. The most the existing site that an existing site has. Uh. Uh, has a photovoltaic system, and but the one next door has a higher potential, but they don't have it yet. But maybe they say they want it, or maybe they don't, but somebody will want it. Uh. Which are we concerned about? I. I mean, why? Why? I guess my the deeper question is why is should we care whether they have already got a photovoltaic system or not? Because I'm not actually, I'm not under percent sure that this that that this one does, but I I maybe I don't remember completely.
Um, I. Don't care whether they have one or not. I just wanted the language to be accurate to what was assessed. So. Um, so what I think I thought it was. My memory of it, and I'm not looking at it right now, is that um they were looking at. The site that they were studying was the one that had the most potential for impact. So there there was no other building, no other home in the area that could have a worse impact.
Correct.
Right.
So I and I so I thought the language to reflect that rather than saying system.
So I think so. I think it's sort of the opposite for the language we know that we now have in there. The important thing. Is that this is the worst case, basically, right? That's.
Exactly.
For the photovoltaic array. Most impacted by. Like that. So the annual solar energy for the photovoltaic array most impacted by the increased shadowing from the project.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Good.
Done.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. So we can accept all that.
Yeah.
Now we're back to affordability and local concerns. Um. And here. There are, let me just see. The paragraph thirty one is a lot similar to what we had in what we talked about earlier, and I would think that we'd want to resolve it in the same way. We've added here the project eligibility letter, which we discussed and that we didn't add in the other place. I think I'm happy to going either way on this, but I wonder Mr. Haverty, is there a danger in referring to the product eligibility letter?
Is there danger in referring to the project eligibility letter?
Yes, it is here. When we talked about it before, we eventually also told us about another place where you just copied the project eligibility letter and got your head handed to you by Hack and I was
But again, so this is a finding, it's not a condition.
Right.
So we're not imposing any sort of requirements as part of this finding. We're just parroting what was submitted to the board. So there's no danger involved there.
Great. So in light of that, I'm perfectly happy with it. Does anyone? Does anyone have a problem? Okay, so let's let's accept that one. And you notice that we're almost getting, we're almost through with the facts.
Number thirty two.
So Mr. Klein, why don't you address that one?
Sure. So thirty two again. So I spent a lot of time rereading every single piece of correspondence the board received on this hearing. And many of them were very much in favor of the application. And specifically, we're very glad about the deeper level of affordability that was being offered. And so I just wanted to capture that in the findings.
So anyone have any comment on that? Okay, without objection, why don't we take that as accepted? So I have a question. So while that process is going on, I have a question that I went that I just thought of as we've been working our way through this. One of the major one of the things about this that sort of is lurking in the background about the project is that it really does go quite far in terms of sustainability. It's going to be passive house construction. It's going to have solar on the roof, if I if I remember correctly. It is not quite all electric, but it's mostly electric with one exception that they're going to be essentially pre-wiring to turn to electric when it's possible. And I was wondering whether the thought did occur to me that especially with the with these kinds of things being brought up in a adversarial way by objectors, whether it would make sense someplace earlier on in the discussion of projects to have a finding of fact relating to sustainability that's along the lines that that I just said, that is actually something that is in the impact report that that we just took out, but so I raised that. If that makes sense, we can come back with language. It would be a simple paragraph to to insert. Is anyone but me attracted by doing that?
Mr. Allen.
Yes, Mr. J. Cordelli.
I I agree. I think I know. I think that's a great idea to to do that. I did have a question, though. You know, I think I remember from the conversation, I'm not sure about the impact report. But they, I think they said that they were exploring passive house. I couldn't remember if they committed to that or not. So I just just asking the question whether that was decided or if that was an option.
On that one, it was decided, although it isn't. I mean, we're not being have not been asked to require it and and haven't required it. They we have, we do require something with the all electric part, but not the passive house part. But I mean, the other thing is, is that I mean, you should realize that although they were very helpful to the town in offering testimony necessary to adopt the specialized stretch code, that will apply to them anyway, and they won't have a choice about passive house.
Yes, that that's a very important point, I think. I I'm not, I think it should be clear in the language that it's it's aligned with what will be required.
Yep.
Maybe I'm speaking out of term, but I I think I I think that their attorney at one point had argued that, or maybe I'm getting this confused with the last forty B project that because this was a state process, they didn't know if they needed to comply with the new specialized stretch code.
That was, well, that did come up in the other process. I don't I don't remember Ms. O'Connor ever ever saying that. And I will say that that HCA did testify before the select board in favor of the specialized stretch code. They're they're not seeking they're not seeking to get away from that. And and Utah also testified in favor of the stretch code. So they've they've been strongly supportive. They're not just an ordinary apartment builder who will have to follow the law. I'll get I'll get some language to you for next time and 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 we'll see. It'll be pretty pretty plain vanilla, but it will just sort of announce it and I'll make clear that it's understood that that the I mean, the town's position, as is the state's position, is that the specialized stretch code is a state state legislation and is binding. But not everyone agrees with that. Okay, so we have now finished the findings of fact and are ready to go to the decision on waivers. And so we're headed back to the back. The first two, I think are unexceptional. But does anyone have anything to any comments to make on either of those?
And I would just note on number two, the applicant had said it was twenty feet. It is twenty four feet because it's it's a calculation based on the length of the overall length of the building. And so it ends up being fourteen feet plus ten feet. So it's twenty four feet.
I this came up on August fifteenth, I thought, and I I think, and I thought that the applicant actually agreed with that at the time. Number three. The the issue with number three was filling in the blanks. And you we can do that with the usable open space because they don't have anything that meets the distribution, the the twenty five by twenty five objective. I was wondering what we still have a blank on landscape and I'm wondering whether we should just I'm wondering what we should do with that. I I did add in at the end, I suggested adding in as a show as shown on the approved plan so that at least that nailed it down to what to what it looks like on paper. But I don't know if we're able to fill in the blanks on the landscape open space. Mr. Klein, do you have an idea about what to do about that?
Um, I would, I can take another look at their landscape plan and try to make a determination based on that as to what the percentage ought to be. Because they do have a buffer around the edge.
Right.
Two sides. And so that would count towards landscaped area. And then I just need to check the bylaw as to whether or not their second floor area would qualify or not.
Right. So I think if we can sort of tell ourselves that we accept the part that's in red and let Mr. Klein do a little more work on filling in the blanks on the part that we haven't got yet. This this could be put into the bag.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Uh, I was just looking at the cover sheet for the drawings that they submitted with the initial application. And then that table of the zoning summary, there's a there's some information there about their open space. So I'm assuming that's calculations from them because it's listed under the proposed column. So they say fifteen hundred, I'm assuming square feet landscape and two thousand square feet usable open space.
There's a good time.
The two thousand usable?
Two thousand usable and fifteen hundred landscape.
We can work with that.
Okay. I'm slightly unless this is it, how is it? Just out of question, how is it possible to have two thousand square feet of usable open space?
They may be counting the the open deck above the garage. That would be my guess of what they're counting and that.
It could be two thousand square feet. It seems like a lot. But anyway, I I think I, I mean, I appreciate your raising that. And that's something we should take a look at as as is always the case with applicants calculations on these categories, they sometimes can't be taken, need to be taken with a grain of salt, but it is, it may turn out to be that that's it's certainly a good place to look. Okay, so we're going to leave this in the sort of semi resolved situation and see if we can't work on on filling in those blanks. It is possible, in my view, that we won't be able to fill in the blanks in a way that we're comfortable, I mean, in in being able to find. And so we may have to think about how else to deal with that. Okay, so we are now getting to. Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's who was who sought to speak? Okay, I guess that was just background. All right. So in the next, the next is is it me? All right, I'll I'll talk less. Lovely. On the next item is are two different approaches to bicycle parking. And so I'll give you, why don't I just give you a moment to read this and then I'll sort of set the stage and then maybe ask Mr. Klein to explain the option that he prefers and and I've got somewhat different view, but I'll give you a chance to look at it. So really, the difference in substance between these two formulations has to do with the ultimate conclusion. The the applicant has all along. Previously, it sought seventy spaces, which by the applicant's calculation was what the bylaw required, of which the largest part, you have to tabulate them separately between long term and short term. And they have asked in on August fifteenth for a reduction in for for us to say that they are planning to do less than that. But not that much less than that. So they're planning on sixty spaces instead of sixty six, I think, and five spaces instead of six for a short term. But they don't want to be committed to that. They want to be committed to something less. They have always been in this position. In other words, on the very day they filed the application at a time when they were talking about having seventy bike spaces, they were asking for a waiver down to forty three. So they've always had this big gap between what they say they're planning to do and what it is that they are willing to be held responsible for doing. It is possible, it's not too clear. We didn't talk about it on August fifteenth. And there may have been a misunderstanding, but it's possible that they've asked, they are asking to reduce that forty three to only twenty one. So we have really three main options. One is we could say all right, you can have it down to twenty one, which is a pretty big gap between twenty one and and sixty something, sixty six. We could say you were always at forty three. That is what they, at least in terms of their written waiver, that's what they've asked for. And we could say with that will keep you at forty three. This is what you started with. You haven't shown us any reason why it is it needs to be more flexible than that. And that's still a long way from the from what it is you're saying you're planning on doing anyway. And the third thing that we could do is to other than deny the waiver is to say, look, you say that you're you're going to do X, Y, and Z. You say you're going to put all of this in here and you and we're going to hold you to your word. So we're going to waive it only to only insofar as it's necessary to get down to what you are stating that you're that you're willing to do. The neither of these alternatives except the twenty going down to twenty one. The one above gives you two subalternatives, one of which sticks at fifty three, and the other would go to what it is they're planning to do. And the one below, the second one, which, you know, covers largely the same territory, only provides the option of basically going from what they originally requested as a waiver to just enough of a waiver to let them do what they say they propose to do. And with that, I'll call on Mr. Klein, who's got a view on this and and this is this is one of those issues that we need to discuss. I'll just say that there there has been a certain amount of planning on one thing and being and asking to be committed to do a lot less. And in a project that is asking for drastic part parking reductions from us that we're entitled to give. You know, it makes a big difference, at least to me, whether you're talking about at least being pretty near code for the for the bicycle parking in a place that's being vaunted as a great location for bicycles. And 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 then a much more modest commitment. So the the only other thing I want to say is the last pair set, last sentence in the first option needs to be there, period. Because one of the things that they've asked for is a variation from the bicycle parking design guidelines. This is what enables them to hang the bikes up and with without that waiver, then the conversation about numbers is entirely idle. Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein, you're muted.
There we go. I know there was, there was an email from Mary. I've been trying to find it. Where she sort of provided some minor corrections to the draft decision. And I had thought in there was where she had indicated the two numbers were sixty and five. Which is why I had included them in mine.
That was under in what she was, she was amending, excuse me. Factual finding number twenty six in the draft she was looking at. She said change seventy to at least sixty long term and ten to five short term.
Yep.
And I've lost my place. There's a concern that there may be a need for more space when the final plans are done in these areas. So that was in the finding of fact. And it was ultimately the reason for the reduction that she asked for was to accommodate the concern that they may need some more space when the plans are done. So they reduced it from there. Then with respect to the waiver, it's a little hard because we have it listed as two different waivers and they have the they have the but what she says in number two is number four, which is this waiver possibly revise one point five and insert one. But what she says in number two is number four, which is this waiver possibly revise 1.5 and insert one. Which I think would be incorrect. And the total parking spaces required are 43 and the applicant seeks a waiver for 21. Now that.
I think that's totally about automotive.
It could be, it doesn't say.
I think, I think she's confused because they. In their waiver request about bicycle parking, they'd never mentioned the word bicycle except in the very last line.
I don't, that. I did actually check that and I, I don't believe that that's the case, in their request. I believe they did. Uh, and the material they sent to us, they didn't, but I'm looking at what is section four. And their revised list of waivers. They, the heading is, uh, by law, section six subsections 6.1.12 and the bicycle parking design guidelines, so we're already in the bicycle world. Then as she recites the, all of the requirements correctly that, uh, apply to bikes. And then again, the applicant proposes 43 spaces, the applicant seeks a waiver from the bicycle parking design guidelines. So I guess the, the, the thing that. Comes in, she's always been talking about the design guidelines and I suppose that that bleeds over to the numbers. As well, but it's clear that this is a section that. In her mind is dealing with bicycles.
Yeah, I read that differently, I read it as. That she's misunderstanding what. What for, number four was requesting. Cause there's different numbers, because there's short term parking, long term parking, and they each have two different factors and she doesn't address all four factors.
Right. But I will say that in the very beginning, they had the same language, this is not changed in the, in the. Revision. And again, it's 43 and it's not 43 broken down into pieces the way you'd expect it to be. So it's, it's just a puzzlement and of course, Ms. O'Connor isn't here to. To clarify what it is she, uh, she intended there. But I don't think that there's any, I, I just have, if there's, if there's sentiment to be. I don't necessarily believe that it's proper to interpret her request for going down to 21. But I can't exclude that either, I personally would not be inclined to do that whether she was requesting it or not.
Mr. Hamlin.
Mr. Riccadelli.
I, I agree with you, I think, I think I would, I would not feel comfortable doing that, especially with the reduction in. Vehicular parking that we have on the project. And, you know, I think that the, the waiver of the bicycle design guidelines gives. The applicant a lot of flexibility as well in terms of how they can arrange and. You know, um. Create the, the bike parking that we're. Giving them a waiver for as listed here, uh, because those, those hanging. Uh, bike parking spaces are, are really much more efficient than the, the ones that are required in our.
Right. And I will say that you, the drawings all show this, they should, they have several drawings that show what their bicycle parking. Plans are and where it's all supposed to be and so forth. It's quite clear that you wouldn't be able to achieve any, even if they're 43, I think, but certainly what they're proposing to do without. Being able to rely on the waiver of the design on that. So as between 43 and increasing it to whatever they, to the. Whatever I just read that they actually were asking for in the memorandum. Where do you all stand?
Mr. Klein. I'm a little torn on it because I've seen this go the other way where, um. We had a. Affordable project similar to this, um, that was recently built and, um, you know, we're walking by the site. And, you know, most of the bike storage spaces were empty. Uh, and it was a, you know, requirement of, of the city to have that many spaces, so I'm just. Trying to find a balance as to what that number should be, I know, because I also agree that, you know, we're reducing the parking pretty significantly. And also we've really touted the, being right next to the, uh, the bike path, so trying to find that balance. But definitely, I think somewhere in that 60 or 40 is probably where I would land.
I will say, I mean, it's theoretically, we can grant a waiver for what if we want, I think. Mr. Paverde can tell, I mean, if we decided. Well, 60 was not giving them quite enough flexibility and 43 isn't supported in any way, it doesn't broken down between long and short term parking. We could say 50, which, or say 20% less than they're proposing or any, any numbers like that, I mean, numbers have this. This capability of filling in an infinite line and so, uh, we could do that. That it is possible for us to do that, it's, any particular place on that continuum that you fall is arbitrary. But I suppose if it's just related to the request and it's just that they're, provide additional flexibility with, that's another possibility that we haven't discussed. Mr. Klein, what do you think?
No, I'm still, I still sort of feel that the. That that brief request that was put in to put the number one, to change 1.5 to one and change it to 40. You know, change the number to 21. Really applies. To the parking. The, the, the car parking and, and I, I just think it was an error on their part and. Because earlier on, they had said they wanted the numbers to be 60 and five. So I think it was just, it's just odd if the waiver request is different than what they asked for in the finding.
It was however, in the beginning as well.
Yeah.
I mean, so if it's not something that's new or something that only came at that last minute memorandum.
Yeah. I just want to make sure whichever we do, we're very deliberate about. What the numbers should be, what they're requesting and what we're giving them.
Right.
At this point, I think we're very clear on. What the number ought to be. And, but we're not quite sure on exactly what they're requesting.
No, I think we are clear on what they're, I was just sort of just saying of the three things that to be clear on, one is what. Is what would be required without a waiver, and I think we have that pretty clear. One is what they're actually proposing to do after taking the flexibility that. They feel that they need and that is the, uh, what I read from their, from their paper, their memorandum earlier on. The one thing that isn't clear here is what they're requesting, which is different from what they're proposing to do, requesting is what they're willing to be held accountable to. And proposing is what they aspire to and we have to. And I don't know that, other than saying I'm pretty sure that what they imagined all along was 43, because that at least has been, has been always there to begin with. And that I have always assumed that that represented a big difference between what they're responsible for and what they want to do. But. But on the other hand, they, they do say that, that the, the reduction that they've requested in the findings of fact. Are, are there specifically to provide them the flexibility they need to deal with, with uncertainty in the layout of the parking garage, so. I don't know, I'm, I'm a little bit worried that. I'm a little bit worried about overdoing it, but. But again, I'm, I have in the back of my head that, that we are planning on allowing them. A pretty big reduction in parking, although we have some justification from that apart from this.
Well, I think if we go in. I guess I would be comfortable if we want to go ahead. You know, we can. Assess it at 43. And then. In our, in our, you know, response to the waiver request, we just need to be clear as to what we're asking for.
Okay. That makes sense.
Mr. Tr.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Just looking back through some of the documentation we, we received and they actually have a slide in one of their presentations devoted to the bicycle parking. And in that they show 64 long term spaces with eight short term spaces.
Right.
So I think, uh. Leaving it with the 60 and I believe it was five for the short term. I think fits within what they've presented to us.
I think you're right, Mr. LeBlanc, they, they originally were, were, when they, they were originally presenting the additional numbers and then. And then they, they're now reducing them, but they're not reducing them anywhere near as drastically as, as. In terms of what, again, in terms of what they're, they're proposing to do as opposed to what they wish to be held accountable for doing.
Yeah, and, and as you mentioned before, the requirement to waive the design guidelines for the bicycle parking gets them to that number. Uh, based on the, the slide that, you know, they're, they're saying certain.
Right.
Ways of storing bikes gets them this many spaces and, and the like, so you're right, we also need that waiver request for the parking guidelines.
Mr. Riccadelli, do you have a view?
I, I agree with what, um, Adam just said, I, I think. I, I, you know, uh, we can only work off what they've asked us. Asked us for and, and the plans that we've been shown and. So far, they've been proposing more bikes than this and if they're asking for a reduction. You know, I personally feel more comfortable with the, the 60 and five number because it has some finding and. And what they've asked for and it's still a reduction from what they. They originally showed us. Uh, rather than. What I'm sort of interpreting is that if we go with the 43, we're sort of guessing at how that's distributed amongst the long term, short term.
Yeah, I think that I, I don't, I don't know of anything that. Is clear about that. So the people I can't see on my screen are, Ms. Hoffman, do you have a view? Here you are.
Hi, hi, sorry. I, I think I agree with. What you and Dan have been saying. And I, I'm. I would like to hold with the 60 and five.
Mr. Holley.
Yeah, um. I think if I understand it correctly, so they're seeking 43 instead of 60, right? Yeah, it's to keep that flexibility they might use to swap out. Any discrepancy or, you know, special arrangement that they have for other parking space looks like.
I think that's, I think it's clear that they have in mind asking for 43, they, because they, they've done that from the beginning.
Yeah, I. Could we know a little more, uh, according to the question or too late for that?
It is ironic that on the 15th, this is one, one waiver that we didn't talk about at all.
Right.
It would have been nice, we didn't think of it, anyway, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Holley.
No, I, um. Right, um. I think they're seeking 43 from what I could, from what I gather. I, I could, e- e- either way, I mean, 43 is not bad, 21 is out of question for sure, so if it's 60, 60 or five, long term, short term or 43, either way, it's okay for me. I don't see a, you know, significant impact. Right.
So. Mr. Klein, you're an expert in counting votes and these votes have all been very thoughtful votes and not just yes or no or 43 or 60, so where do you think we are?
So. I believe that we are look, so the, I think, so there's two parts, one is what the request actually is, and I think we are, we have sort of gotten to the point where we're all in agreement that the request is for 43 bicycle parking spaces. Uh, but they do not make a differentiation between short and long. So. Uh, working off of your language, I was just changing. Through the backend of it, so I'd read the total number of bicycle parking spaces required by this section would be 72 spaces. 66 spaces long term and six short term, the applicant proposes 43 total bicycle parking spaces. The applicant also requests a waiver from the bicycle parking design guidelines. Um, and I would leave it at that, they didn't ask for any additional waivers from others. Aspects of the zoning bylaws that relates to bicycle parking?
Well, I think that one of the, the reason I put that language in there actually is because I think. The bicycle parking design guidelines are just guidelines and they're not actually a waiver of anything.
Hmm, okay.
And the only reason why they matter is because they expound upon certain provisions of the zoning bylaw that. Deal with design, so essentially they're like interpretative rules. And if you don't, if you only waive the interpretation and don't waive the underlying statute, you haven't really accomplished anything.
Okay. So if we were to maintain that, I think we need to be very clear about what. Provisions of the, we're. Waiving, because it's a big section.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So if we're okay with this portion of it. Then. This being the or part of strike all of that, then the board, then we do need to come up with. A better statement as to what exactly we're doing and I think waiver granted doesn't quite do it.
Yep.
The question, I think we, we have sort of a couple of different options here. So one would be we can. Provide them with, with the numbers that we want. And. We can, we should, if. We should do that, we should also, uh, provide some guidance as to what parts of does the. Yeah, that was it 6110 or 6112 or whatever that section is. 6112 that we are willing to. To waive.
Great. Alright, so what I would propose doing at this point is leaving it at that. We'll go, we'll finish off, we'll go back into 6.1.12 and. And specify that, that isn't very difficult. And so we'll have language, I guess that. I do think that we, that if we give them a, if we did give them a waiver of 43. I think that if they haven't asked how it's distributed, we need to. Because it makes a difference whether it's long and short term. And I don't know how you would interpret 43 when the statute breaks it down that way. And, and then let's leap on it and, you know, come to a conclusion. And come to a conclusion next Tuesday.
Exactly.
This is actually probably the hardest. Thing. So far. Mr. Tr. Mr. DuPont. I didn't ask you what you thought, because you weren't on my screen.
Because I, I was just sort of ticking along with Adam and Dan and then Venka. I, I just tended to think that, you know. They, what they said or what they had on their plan, which was, I believe, what was it, 66 and five or whatever those numbers were? I mean, that's really all we know. Except for the fact that they're saying 43, but it's undifferentiated and your comment earlier was we could put in any number we wanted. And, and what I was curious about though is just in terms of formatting. If we say, you know, that they're requesting 43. And then we have to somehow expand on that. Um, by saying, well, that's going to be divided into X number of long term. And Y number of short term. Are we actually granting the waiver? Or are we denying the waiver and imposing some other? Uh, condition, I'm just not clear what our actual. You know, what, what the. You know, wh- what what the. Format is if we say. Uh no to what you've asked because you haven't given us enough information and we're supplying you with information. I just didn't know if that provides some additional problem for us.
From a draft. Interesting thing. It's a little bit, it's a little bit different from saying granted to the extent that, right? Because. Because you're dealing with apples and oranges here because they're asking for a single total, a combined total. When all when we're thinking about having it separated out. Uh you know, you could probably give them. Less than they ask for. As long as it's on the same scale. I'm not sure what happens when you when then you take an additional step there. Mr. Havity, if I've I've now. Uh filibustered long enough for you to have some thoughts on this. I wonder if you could. Comment on on Mr. DuPont's observation.
In regards to the issuance of waiver. Your authority is really anywhere from what the bylaw requires all the way down to zero. And. It it doesn't have to be specifically. What the applicant requested, you can grant even more leeway if you want, you can grant less. The end of the day, the only really. Deciding question is whether or not they can construct their development. As proposed. If you don't grant this waiver. So if they don't have enough space to do the number of. Bicycle parking spaces that you are proposing to require. That's going to lead to an appeal and a claim that your decision has rendered the the project uneconomic. So that's really your only limiting factor. If you feel that there's sufficient amount of room. For for them to do the number of bicycle parking spaces that you are requiring with whatever. You know, leeway on the bylaws in terms of the design standards that you grant. You can pretty much do whatever you want.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, so I still think thinking about it and getting a combined, you know. Mr. Klein has already sort of put things together about that and. It the key thing, I I think, I think we're we're okay really with with the language of four describing what the problem is. And now we have to just describe what we can do. For the short-term phase, space. Uh and I'm not a hundred percent. Some of us, I think, really would like to go towards the sixty and some of us. Are feel. Fancy about that and might want to stick to the forty-three in order to avoid inadvertently making the project uneconomic if things break wrong. And some of us feel both ways at the same time. So I suggest why don't we work out a couple of alternatives for the waiver granted language and. And just go up or down on on something next week. Okay, so if that's our, if that's acceptable to you, that can be a reserve point and we get to number five. And number five is the. Is the uh. Is the parking waiver. Uh and the the options that are here are. Two-fold. Uh one is to say it's denied is unnecessary because we're accessing our, we're exercising our authority to reduce the number of spaces. Uh and to do that, we have to say that there's a sufficient number of park spaces. And we also have to say there's a TDM plan. We have required a TDM plan and or we will have required a TBM plan. Maybe even a more than one location. Uh but the TDM plan is sort of a special purpose thing because many of the things that. Uh are listed in this the bylaw as things that we should be considering. Are things that the applicant can't do. And some of the things that they are willing to to do are not listed. So there's a catch-all there, and there's a good argument that we are capable, we have the authority to. Uh but we don't have a TDM plan. We're only asking, making them make one up. And get it approved by. Uh the senior transportation manager. So I would say that it's not like a hundred percent sure. That. The reduction here is strictly in in compliance with the statute. So one way of doing it is to say, do the same thing as we'll be asked to do with respect to the stormwater bylaw and to say. That it's unnecessary and we're exercising our authority to reduce the number of parking spaces to twenty-one. And that's a possibility. The second possibility is. Uh to say that the the board believes it would be sufficient and the TDM plan is also sufficient. And uh. We exercise our discretion to allow the reduction and to the extent to which it might be thought ineffective, the waiver is granted. Uh so the first one basically just. Is exercising our authority and that's it. The second one is exercising our authority but granting the waiver just in case. Uh and Mr. Klein, I wonder if you have a view on any of this. Just line your microphones off.
Thank you. Um. You know, we are allowed to reduce the amount with. It's with a TDM in place, but we don't have a TDM and they haven't really talked about one per se. So I think. Sort of the alternative. That you provide, um just the one in red. Is a little, makes a little bit more sense. You know, because we are allowed to make the reduction. We don't have a TDM, but we find. In this case, we don't. You know, we can. We can do what we we can just grant the waiver.
Does anyone else have a view?
I agree with that. If if it's a prerequisite for the waiver denied. To actually have a TDM plan and we don't have it. Uh it seems to me that the alternative. At least deals with that fact if if I understand. Uh Christian's comment.
Yep.
So if I do, I I favor that approach, the alternative.
So anyone else wa- wish to address this one? Okay, so I think right now, uh so far, the alternative has it. So going, if anyone dissents with that, please let let me know and we continue talking about it and otherwise. We can uh. Put this one to bed.
Yeah, our ability to reduce the parking through TDM requires them to adopt at least three. Different. Uh components and. Most of them, they're not allowed to provide by their. Uh funding mechanism. So I think we we may be in a position where we really only can grant the waiver.
Right. Okay, well, I think that we, I think that that seems sound, and why don't we say that we'll. That's where we are. And uh. Go on to the next. They get easier after this. The next one is uh. Has to do with the uh. Parking spaces. Yeah, the only question I have there, the numbers are a little bit dodgy, I think, on this one, but. I have a feeling that the insert on the third line down sixty percent or twenty-one spaces. Is probably meant to say sixty percent of twenty-one spaces. Which isn't perfect, but it's a lot closer to the eleven that they're asking for than. Then uh. Whatever sixty percent of X comes out to twenty-one. Is they, I I didn't write that part, actually. Is that Mr. Havity? Was that? Your intent?
Uh which one is this?
This is in number six, the third line down, the applicant requests a waiver to allow sixty percent or twenty-one spaces. And so on. And I I think that in their actual request, they specify that what they're asking for is eleven. Am I right about that?
I have to go back and look at that, Mr. Chairman.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't say. It says to permit more than twenty percent of the spaces to be sized by compact car. But I'm pretty sure that at some point they say they want eleven. Spaces to to be compact spaces. Does anyone remember that differently?
Unfortunately, I can't find that. Sort of statement from Mary where she sort of outlines what she's looking for for. Final changes.
Let me see if I can. I can find it. I have it sort of sitting out. Let's see if I can. That probably is where my eleven came up. Alright, so this is waiver. Number six.
Yeah.
And what she says there is the applicant seeks eleven compact spaces or sixty percent.
Okay.
So I think it would be the easiest thing to do and the clearest thing to do is just grant her eleven. And then not worry about what it's sixty percent of.
Yeah.
Not not a complicated anything, but. Uh it's twenty-one spaces total, right? So sixty percent would be like thirteen.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I I'm aware of that. When I said that the arithmetic was, the numbers were a little dodgy. And I did actually some manipulation and and could not find. Any number that was related to sixty percent that would have any meaning in this case at all. So it's. It's just rounding error. Okay, uh but the proposal in any event is whatever they're asking for is to grant it. And I think that that we probably are willing to do that. Is there anybody who would object to that?
No.
Okay. So the next waiver is number seven. Um and this is the to reduce the. The aisle size. Uh and I'm not, I don't think that there. That is uh. There hasn't been any discussion of that. Does anybody have any objection to that one?
Did her most recent request. Further reduce that to twenty-one?
Um you, that would refer to the memo, right?
Yeah.
Number seven. Yes, they do. It is. They do have twenty-one. Twenty-two should be twenty-one.
Must hit twenty-one feet. I'm getting a little concerned. This is just how much maneuvering space they they really have. Now, ask, yeah, other members of the board what they think about the the number of twenty-one.
I I agree with you, Mr. Clyde. Twenty-two is uh. Fairly standard. I mean, it's always required to be twenty-four in most jurisdictions, but. Twenty-two, you see around twenty-one does. Does feel kind of tight for for ninety-degree parking spaces.
But it's on the. What do they have in their plans? If you were looking back at the drawings.
It was originally twenty-three. I thought.
Yeah, and I had written down here twenty-two and until the memo. Uh I I that's where I thought they were on the. Until uh Ms. O'Connor's memo of the fifteenth.
I'll check through the drawings right now and just see what they add.
You know, our decision here does have some bearing on the bike parking as well because the more. The more constricted this is, the harder it is to for them to balance everything, which I think is. Part of the reason why you're seeing a certain degree of angst on their part. They've got only a little bit of space and they've got to meet a lot of. Goals for that space.
Mr. Chair, it looks like um. Based on the drawings I'm seeing, they're saying twenty-three feet. I I do recall, I think it was at the last meeting where they did request for that to be reduced.
Does anyone remember what?
I it sounded more. What it sounded a lot like was that they were. Redesigning the that lower floor. And we're just looking for. You know, sort of some some blanket room to move and maneuver things. Then they didn't have a specific request. In terms of, you know, there's this situation we ran into. We really need to have twenty-one feet.
Right. Well, I don't, I, as you all know, I don't have the expertise one way or the other on knowing what is or isn't an appropriate thing here. But I am somewhat concerned that as you get smaller, as as you get smaller and smaller, you develop. A safety problem that. We wouldn't want to do. So it's, I if I'm right about that, then it's not sort of cost-free to keep going down. I don't have any problem with twenty-two and I don't have the sense that anybody else does.
I do have a note in my notes from our eight-one meeting that says twenty-two foot minimum on drive aisle width. That helps.
Yeah. It kept going down, right? It started at twenty-three and then it was twenty-two and then it's twenty-one.
Yeah.
So I guess the. Start my video again. The uh. What, well, we have five architects on the board. How bad is twenty-one? Is this, I mean, there's, there's one thing about, there's a difference between misgivings and heartburn and. Heartburn, we won't do it, and misgivings, we might, and I'm trying to figure out where we are in the heartburn, misgiving.
My feeling is that if, you know, if it was twenty-one feet and it was between two area, two aisles where there were. Compact cars. It might work. Um because the cars are smaller. But if you had a longer vehicle, twenty-one feet, real, you know, you've lost three feet and you have to have one person parked badly and all of a sudden. You know. You really can't get out anymore.
Okay, and the and they do have eleven, I mean, half of their. Spaces are compact. Uh but not all of them. Right, so that still creates that problem.
Yeah, and then they also noted somewhere that the location of the compact cars would be determined at the final. Plan, nothing is final.
Right. Hopefully, they would. They would do that in a way to make the geometrics of the parking thing work as as well as possible, but.
Right.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ricardelli.
Uh, you know, man, if I can make one suggestion, uh. Uh you know, my only concern about. The the twenty-one is really right where you enter the parking garage because it's back-to-back parking. Um. Where they had proposed previously, you know, twenty-two feet where it's a single aisle parking. Uh up against the back of the project. Uh but that's not really a concern, so. You know, I I don't want to split hairs here, but uh we could say. Where there's back-to-back parking, the minimum aisle width is twenty-two feet. At at single-loaded driveways. We could give them the flexibility to go to twenty feet, and that may give them a little bit more room to maneuver. Uh because that's typically a standard at at single-loaded ninety-degree parking, twenty feet is acceptable, so.
Klein, what do you think about that?
I think that's reason, that that's perfectly reasonable. Um I would note on the August first drawing set for the Civil. They do show uh twenty-two-point-three feet on the single-loaded and twenty-three feet on the double-loaded. For aisle widths, so. Not a hundred percent sure why they're requesting it, but we could say. yeah, I, I think what, you know, what Mr. Caddell said is, is very, is very astute that you know, where it's double loaded, you, you really want the bigger number, but where it's single loaded, it's not quite as bad. Because you're not going to hit another person's vehicle, you're just going to hit the wall. So.
I would suggest.
Mr. Haverty.
What I would suggest is that if the plans show a minimum of twenty two feet all around, then the waiver should be for twenty two feet. If at some point they feel like they need to come in and provide the board revised plans that show a smaller width and have a new request for a waiver, you can, you know, consider that as a modification. But I don't think that you should be granting a waiver above and beyond what they're showing on their plans.
But that's even though they've asked, specifically asked for it.
Correct.
They did ask for the twenty one.
But their plans don't show it.
Yeah. So if we indicated that they requested twenty one, but we say the waiver granted to allow a drive aisle of twenty two feet as indicated.
So, Mr. Haverty, if I could, does this principle apply equally to the, to the bike parking? Because the bike parking, the plans show actually more than they're currently asking for.
I, I hundred percent agree with that. The waivers should be consistent with the plans. If they want to come back at some point and, and submit revised plans and ask for a modification, certainly within their right to do so.
Okay, well, that sort of has a bearing on, on consideration of the earlier issue.
Yeah, and I can take, I can take a pass at that for next time.
I guess we also need to make sure, I mean, I, I, I certainly have looked at plans which said what they had, they have lots of bike plans that they had specifically and so forth. I'm, I do, we do need to make sure that if we I'm not a hundred percent sure that the plans that we've looked at are listed in the approved plans in A two. So we prob, we might want to make sure that we're looking at something that really has plan on it and is not just a exhibit for our benefit, but uh, but that, that just means kind of looking back at where, looking at the things that we know are plans and seeing what's, what's illustrated there. Alright. So we're now at number eight. Are we, is it eight? Yes. Number eight. Okay, so, Mr. Haverty, why don't you explain this one?
Okay, so a, as I read this provision of the bylaws, it was applicable to parking and loading areas which are not inside a structure. And my understanding was that the parking for this development is inside a garage. So I, I don't think it would be applicable and therefore not necessary.
Everybody agree with them? Okay.
The first sentence of that, of that section of the bylaws, all parking and loading areas containing over five spaces which are not inside a structure.
Right.
Right, very clearly not applicable.
So, alright, so then let's get to number nine. Uh, and this is similar to, to that, Mr. Mr. Haverty?
Yeah, so this, this section applies to buffers in any industrial or business district that abuts certain buildable residential lots. And I, I don't believe this abuts any buildable residential lots. So I don't believe that this provision is applicable either.
Yeah, I think I did look at the zoning map and all of the lots that are at least immediately adjacent to this, plus the lot across the street are either B two, B two A or before. It might be useful though, I wonder. Uh, I, it might be useful to include language in the request, the, the description of the sections to include the buildable residential lot point in it because now the reason why it is we don't think is applicable is not apparent from the reading of, of the description of the section. Or is that, does that make sense? I think it's only A that's like that, but B just refers to a different, to the section that's dealt with in eight, if I'm not mistaken.
So we would change that to waiver denied is not applicable to the project, comma, as the property does not abut any buildable residential lots.
Okay, I, I was thinking of putting the buildable residential lots in the, in the text, but either one works fine. Hey, the next one up is waiver ten for fees. Mr. Klein, would you want to explain this one?
So the applicant had requested a waiver from all fees, which is something the town had done on their uh, project on Westminster Avenue. So we, Pat and I had approached the town manager and department heads asking if they would be willing to do the same thing here. And they had agreed and the way the board action listed here is I believe the text is directly from the, uh, town manager's, uh, letter.
Yes. It isn't a, it isn't a complete clue because of moving clauses around, but all the main language is often there. Does anyone have any difficulty with granting these waivers? Alright, so let's, let's go on to eleven. Eleven is the stormwater bylaw, excuse me, the stormwater bylaw issue. And again, this is, this is one where wait, I, I'm not looking at the, at the bylaws. So my recollection, as I mentioned earlier, is that it does not apply, the stormwater, the town stormwater management bylaw does not apply. If unless, if, if you have a certain amount of increased impervious pa, pavement, and here there's less than there was before. And that, or that, that it was more than an acre and this is a third of an acre. So, uh, the applicant has requested is to say that what is said here on the, in purple. And except for the fact that there's two periods at the end of purple, that seems unacceptable, unexceptionable. Does anyone have a? Okay, if we're okay on that one. Um, number twelve is one of the few things in all of this that hasn't changed at all. Does anyone propose to change that situation? Okay, well, seeing, seeing no comments, let's move on to number thirteen. Now, here it's not clear to me why it is we're dealing with both thirteen and eleven, since one seems a subset of the other.
I, I think mainly because that's what the applicant requested. So we're simply addressing all of their waiver requests.
Okay.
May not be strictly necessary if we're granting thirteen, but.
Yeah. Well, or eleven, eleven is the broader one, right? Because it
Well, then, then there is one thing. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at this. So eleven is the stormwater bylaw.
Right.
Thirteen is the stormwater management rules and regulations. So they add different documents.
Yeah.
So you would need separate waivers.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, the reason for the waiver here is that the bylaw that the rules are implementing doesn't apply.
Okay, so do we just say waiver granted? Or do we want to include something more similar to what we did for eleven?
Either one's fine with me.
Yeah, I would, I think that well, either one is fine. As long as the waiver, the, the thing that would be dangerous is to not grant the waiver and rely on our interpretation of the stormwater bylaw and then find that the town manager doesn't agree with that. That would be, that would be a bad result. Whereas if you grant the waiver, you granted it. You may not have needed to, but you did anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're really coming down now to the very, I think, the very last bylaw, the one that's totally new, not bylaw, the very last waiver. And this has to do with noise abatement. Uh, Mr. Klein?
Yep, so essentially this came about when we were reviewing the, the draft decision. Um, we had included language that had been approved through a waiver for uh, previous projects that would allow work to begin at seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays. And the applicant indicated they wanted that as well, so we needed to add this one more uh, one more waiver request. And they were in agreement, um, as had been done on prior projects that we will grant them the seven AM on weekdays and the eight AM on Saturdays. However, there will be no work on Sundays and holidays um, in exchange for that. So, and they agreed to it. So just putting that here in writing.
So is there any, does anyone object to that? Okay, we've come to the end of the waivers. So we made findings are fact. We've gone through the waivers. The two hours that I originally said we try to do have expired. And at the wish of, at the risk of contradicting myself. I wonder if you can take, if you are willing to take a, we're, we're next going to conditions. And it turns out that we don't have much work to do on conditions that are sort of at the beginning and it would be nice to get one of the, two of the subsections out of the way, which I think we can do in just a few minutes. Uh, so if we can go back to conditions A general. There and leaving aside, postponing until next week to deal with the August first, twenty twenty three, which has to do with finding where those plans actually are and making sure that they're properly in the record. Um, and so that could, that could mean that we'd have to undo or redo some things. Um, we don't really have any amendments of substance until we get to I think until we get to A six. Is that right, Mr. Mr. Klein?
That's correct. Just cleaning up number four. The six hundred square feet. Yep, so A six is again, it's about the waiving of fees.
That, I take it, that, that should be essentially, I mean, we have waived it, so I, I'm not sure that there's anything really to think about.
Yeah, there is a war.
Yeah, there is a war.
We can go ahead and just drop that second part.
Great. Okay, so I don't think if there's anything else in section A.
I do not see anything else in section A.
Now, in section B, we go back to the original discussion we had on the subsidizing agency. And there's, there's one potential change in, in B one and otherwise we're with Mr. Haverty's language. And, um, I think that, I mean, this was the key condition. This is the one, this is the one that's a condition rather than just uh, finding a fact. And and I think that this is what we've been pulling up for. I think ultimately to me, the most important thing is the last sentence. Which is, I think, a position that we really ought to take and that has been implicit in the decisions we've made up to now in the findings of fact. Is everybody comfortable with this language?
Something wonky with the grammar, but I'll look at that.
Okay. So before changes um, sale to rent up, which probably gives you a, a glimpse into the archaeology of this provision. Alright, so I'm going to press my luck since it's only twenty one thirty nine, it's nine thirty nine. But if we look at C, we don't have a whole lot there either. Um, and the first question in C is whether we ought to, uh, require a um, deposit at, at the appropriate time, of course, uh, to for purposes of peer review when you go to the, uh, when, when you're doing your final plans. Um, and we have, I think in the past, you sixty five hundred, I think that in one of the other cases, uh, I've suggested adding reasonably able and available, just to make it clear. It is often true that we have people with technical expertise to do the kind of review that's required here, but they're already being overutilized six times over and they just, they just can't. So I wanted to make clear that that was a reason why it is we have to use a peer review consultant. Uh, other than that, there's nothing very exceptional about this paragraph that I, that I know. Does anyone have any dis, discontent with this one? Alright. The next place where there is a proposed change. Um, I believe in, is in number H.
So there's just a, a brief one in C, um, because they are providing street trees. I just wanted to note that So there's just a, a brief one in C, um, because they are providing street trees, I just wanted to note that. When we're talking about trees that are along. Streets and walkways, that they should be salt tolerant, I just wanted to include the word trees in there.
Great.
That's all that was.
So. Sorry. The, there's a deletion, wait a minute, we're H, right? Although it's, I guess, now not H anymore. So H, the sewer permits have been changed by the, with different language with respect to the, to. Waiver, and that we don't waiver certain things and we do others. Um, and so. And this is, that is that H. Itself, right? And then J is the deletion of test pits, which should be uncontroversial, because they're not doing. Doing those.
The original H and the original I are. Essentially the same with a, with some. Change in language, so we're going to strike H and keep the former I, which will become the new I.
Great. Does anyone have any difficulty there? And did, did anyone have an issue over those things which I whizzed on by because there were no proposed changes, but. You all may have had a change and suddenly you've lost your chance, so if there's anything. That you want to draw attention to, that I don't draw attention to, you should certainly feel free to stop and say, wait a minute, let's, let's deal with this. Okay, that takes us now to. D. Yes, Mr. Holy.
Question, that sixty-five hundred. Was that for the plan review? Of the, you know, um. Bu, but that is again wave two, is.
No, no.
No.
No, this is, this is, this is for us, right? The town manager waived the, the fees, but the, certainly the zoning board isn't going to waive them. Um, these are all things that would be done anyway, that, that would be done through fifty-three chief funding, just as we had Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Reardon doing it now. Uh, there's a lot of things that have been postponed to review of final plans. And so there may very well be work for a peer review consultant. To do at that stage to make sure the final plans are. Consistent with the preliminary plans, but the preliminary plans give rise to a certain degree of flexibility, so. Expert advice is apt to be needed, and that's what this is about. It's not part of the fee waivers that uh, were agreed to by the. The town manager, you'll set up an account just like we did with Tetra Tech and you fund, put funds into it. And the only thing about. The, the, the deposit is that you put it in first.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Haverty, do I have that basically right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, so we have now gone through A, B, and C of the conditions. We did that in twelve minutes, and I'm not planning on pressing my luck, uh, I think that we've done.
We can do D, we can do D.
All right.
Or maybe not.
If there's popular demand, I'm willing to try it. Sure, let's do D. And D should be pretty easy.
So the only issue in D is G two, part B, which is where we're talking about the property management plan. And I believe the applicant had requested that we strike pet policy, staffing, and trash removal. But there were questions that were raised by residents about the trash removal policies, so we wanted to make, I felt it was important to maintain that. And there was also questions about smoking policies, so make sure that remained as well. And then there was a, I believe. It was raised, I, Sir Haverty, I can't remember if it was you who had mentioned it, that a copy of the plan needs to be provided to. Somebody at the state level as well.
Or the. Property management plan, it has to go to the subsidizing agency.
Subsidizing agency, yeah.
There was, there was language that. That was proposed by. If I can find it. By Ms. O'Connor. Um, and this is on, what, D? With, she, you know, what she wanted at the end was the plan shall be submitted after its approval by the executive office of housing and livability. So. So she has the sequence of events the other way, the way around, she wants to go to the. State first, get it approved, and then provide it to the town. And I don't know how that. I don't know what the intent was, given that this has to be prior to the issuance, issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Well, they're going to be required to have this, I think, as part of their final approval. Submittal, so that's going to be well in advance of certificates of occupancy, so their proposed. Um, order certainly is fine.
Okay, so what they, was, what she says, the plan shall be submitted after its approval by the executive office. So she's looking, okay.
So Pat, if you could just email me that, I will swap it in.
Okay, will do. Will do. All right, so we did.
Then E gets ugly, so.
He's got lots of stuff, so let's, let's take a break and pick that up. We, we went. Uh, seven. Seventeen minutes. Overtime, but we got through four sections, so that, that seems like a help, that'll make our life, our lives easier uh, next week. Okay, so we've reached the end of the, this session of the deliberations, we've made a considerable amount of progress. Uh, we have a bit to go, but it's not that much really, and um. Next week, we'll come to closure on some of the issues that are outstanding from tonight. Uh, work our way through uh, the remaining issues, and I hope at least be in a position. Uh, to uh, approve of a final permit. Uh, if not, we ought to be in a position to do it very quickly in a short session, but I'm hoping that we can avoid that, we've gotten pretty far tonight. That is, is, if, sort of the meeting is open for any final comments or suggestions, and. So let me stop there. If anyone has been itching to say something, this would be the time to say it. And otherwise, the chair would entertain a motion to, to continue the deliberation section to. Uh, next Tuesday, uh. Uh, September twelfth at seven thirty.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Klein?
So moved.
Second, second by Mr. Dupont, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Gotta do a roll call.
I have to, have to do a recall even for.
By state law, yep.
All right, Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Ha, no, not Mr. Haverty, Mr. Dupont.
Aye, aye.
Been here enough, I'm almost voting.
Mr. Ricardelli?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mr. Holy?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we are continued, thank you.
Thank you. We didn't need to adjourn.
Oh, yep, we do, we do. All right, does anyone want to move to adjourn, or we can break out the Miller and enjoy ourselves prematurely?
Mr. Chairman, I, if we adjourn.
An aye second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Dupont. Um, Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Ricardelli?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mr. Holy?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.